I call this May 15, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda, approval of the minutes of April 10, 2017, regular meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I move we approve the minutes of the April 10, 2017, regular meeting as submitted.
Second.
Here a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor. Next thing is approval of the minutes of the April 24, 2017, special meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move we approve the minutes of the April 24, 2017, special meeting as submitted.
Second.
Here a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor. Okay, it's now past the hour of 7 o'clock. Election of offices. We have the town clerk here, Andy Dowden. This is a yearly, um, oh, thank you. This is a yearly, um, thing that we do. We change seats, um, elect new offices for chairman, vice chair, and clerk after the elections. And Andy will be running the elections this evening. You're on.
Good evening. Thank you. First off, congratulations to Don and Jason on their reelection, um, the town election that was held last Tuesday, May 9.
Thank you.
Um, and if I could just extend a quick thank you to my staff that helps run that event and makes everything go smooth. Um, that includes my assistant town clerk, Karen Wilbur, all the election workers, DPW staff who set things up for us, the police who are there during the day to keep us safe. So it's a team effort and I appreciate all those folks, so, thanks, sir. Indulging you there for a quick second.
No problem at all.
Um, and as you said, annually, um, the board reorganizes itself after the elections, so at this point, I would call for nominations for chair. Don?
Uh, I move to nominate Jason Peralta as chair.
Second.
She made him seconded. Any other nominations for chair? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations for chair. Is there any discussion about that nomination? Hearing none. All those in favor is Jason for chair.
Sure.
Get a vote, Jason.
Unanimous? Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
All right, now, vice chair, I'll call for nominations for that office, please. Jason?
I'd like to nominate Jeff Amberson for vice chair.
Second.
Motion for Jeff, made and seconded. Any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, I'll close those nominations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Unanimous again, congratulations. And last but not least, for clerk of the board, if I could have a nomination for that.
Leslie Bruton.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any other nominations for clerk? Hearing none, I'll close those nominations. Any discussion? Don't see any indication of that. All those in favor? Congratulations.
We were gonna give you a little test tonight, Andy.
Make it easy for me, I appreciate that.
You're really earning the overtime.
Before I leave my, uh, my seat, I really enjoyed being the chair last, uh, last year, and I wanna thank the board, and I'm gonna, we're gonna musical chairs.
Take your name, please.
Oh, yeah, take your name, too, guys.
Probably the names got changed.
Just the seats have been changed.
Oh, good.
Oh, yeah.
Close, too.
You're just going one seat up, right?
Yeah.
Going all the way down.
Shit.
One end to the other, Bill.
I gotta get all these.
Have to get them all settled.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much. Just wanna say I'd like to thank, uh, Bill and Don and Jeff for their service over the past year as chair, vice chair, and clerk. Appreciated, and as usual, running like a well-oiled machine, so I hope to continue.
Thank you.
Hope to continue the, uh, the procedure, so. With that, past the hour of 7, well, approximately the hour of 7:05, uh, next item on the agenda, public hearing to consider petition number 23730769 from National Grid for one new pole at 255 Hudson Street.
My name is Crystal Tognazi. I'm from National Grid, the Hope Dale location. So we had a new request, um, at 255 Hudson Street for the installation of a new underground service. Whenever there is a new customer-owned service being installed underground, um, we always try to go off a pole on their side of the property, and then usually those poles are set on the property lines, and then they could go underground. However, in this instance, we did not have that luxury. The poles are across the street in both this way. So, um, that being said, we are proposing the installation of new pole 60-50, and that will be used as an underground riser pole for 255. Pole 60-50 will be approximately 75 feet from existing pole 60, and approximately 60 feet from pole 61. That's it.
Any questions or comments from the board? I had one question about the diagram.
My super awesome picture.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so the secondary you're gonna ask me about?
Yes, thank you.
Again, that's my fault. I probably wasn't wearing my glasses. These are my drawings, both of these petitions we'll be speaking about tonight. Uh, the town engineer was kind enough to point out my mistakes, so, um, we have a new program, so that's not really any excuse, but they used to be clearly defined as to what wire would be using on the sketches themselves. This one I have to manually draw, so that is the one that I chose, but inadvertently it should have been, um, listed with an additional line showing underground customer-owned secondary service. However, all of the secondary that's listed on here, secondary conductors on the road and that service are all showing as overhead, but this service was clearly defined as an underground service, just so you know.
Okay.
Is that what you were gonna ask me?
Yes, it was. Exactly.
Yeah.
Is that a correction that will be made to the drawing?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay.
Again, um, absolutely, that's like a five-second, I can forward it to, um, the clerk for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience care to make a comment? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the placement of a new solely-owned pole at 255 Hudson Street per petition number 23730769 as submitted by National Grid. Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Very good.
Mr. Chair, given the fact that your next item on your agenda is time for 7:10, and we're just a couple minutes shy, I'd recommend you move to your next matter of business, which should only take a minute, um, because if there are butters who have concerns, wanna make sure that they come at 7:10. If they do arrive, you wanna be able to take their comments.
Sure, that's fine.
Absolutely.
We'll wait a couple of minutes. Going ahead in the agenda, Kimberly Reed, Purple Rose, to consider an application for a special one-day license for premises located at 140 Main Street.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations.
Thank you.
On your new seat. Um, I am Kimberly Reed with Purple Rose, and this Thursday evening, we are hosting our 20th anniversary celebration, and I'm here to apply for a one-day, um, license for beer and wine for the event.
Okay.
Any questions?
Uh, this has been reviewed, chief.
Sergeant Griffin has reviewed it as her agent. He hasn't been home sick today. His only request was that there be signage that clearly, uh, marks where the alcohol service ends and begins at the entrance to the tents, so that people aren't leaving the tents, going out to the areas not defined in the drawing.
Yep, and that was gonna be one of my questions, so it must be contained within the tent, the tents.
The area that you have specified in the drawing is what will be licensed.
Okay, and we'll have an entrance at that point, 'cause we do, are selling tickets to the event, so you have to have a ticket to get in, and then people won't be able to get out. There'll be a table there, um, with our workers who'll let people know they can't leave with the alcohol. I can do a sign as well.
Sign.
Okay.
Very good. Uh, any other questions? Bill?
Are you gonna have beer and wine, or is it gonna be liquor, too?
Just beer and wine.
Just beer and wine?
Yeah.
Leslie?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to mention, I think, a couple things that stood out to me, is the fact that the bartender is tips-trained, and that he's got all the parking worked out. It sounds like you're having some people park across Brigham Street.
Yep, um, I have received permission from Central 1, 6 Maple Street, as well as 130 Main Street, where they can go that back entrance from Brigham and walk across to come over. And then we have our spaces as well, and then, um, I did speak to, um, George Pember over there, when we usually have our tent sale and stuff, he's usually fine with that. I talked to him a little while ago, I haven't gotten in touch with him, but I'm sure people can park there as well. And then we have our lot.
Sounds like a good situation.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Just wanted to congratulate you on 20 years.
Thank you.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, we think so. We're pretty excited.
Small business.
Yeah, exactly.
You guys have done really well, so.
Thank you.
Congrats.
We're happy about it. All right, if you're around, come by, I'll sneak you in without a ticket.
I live for that.
Uh, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would also like to congratulate you, I can remember when you opened, so it doesn't seem like it could possibly be 20 years, but.
Well, um, I, I was graduating from my school when Mom bought the building, so, and she started the business without me, so.
Still counts.
It does, it does. I'm owner by default, I usually say.
So say, I move the board vote to approve the application for a special one-day license as submitted by Vicky Martelli of the Purple Rose for an event to be held in the parking lot of the Purple Rose store at 140 Main Street on Thursday, May 18, 2017, between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m., with the condition that a sign be posted at the entrance exit of the tent that reads "No Alcohol Beyond This Point." Per the recommendation of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, license shall include the 24-hour period immediately before and after the event in order to allow for the proper delivery and disposal of all alcoholic beverages prior to and immediately following the event.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'll try to keep it down.
And now past the hour of 7:10, so we will conduct the next public hearing to consider petition number 23958883 from National Grid for one new pole at 173 West Main Street.
So again, I'm Crystal Tognazi, National Grid. Uh, okay, so this one, we had a service upgrade at 173 West Main Street in Northborough, that's the property that abuts the pet store on, um, West Main Street, and their service goes directly through a very large tree, and, um, we tried to accommodate everything, and, um, it just wasn't feasible for them to remove the tree, because they were in the process of selling the property. So, um, what I did was, I handled the upgrade on a separate order, and I am now proposing a new pole to correct this issue, um, from the public way. They're presently fed from a pole that's set in between the two lots, that will still stay there, because it also serves that pet store, um, and that won't change, and they don't have a giant tree going through there, their service going through, really monstrous tree. So, that being said, um, I'm proposing new pole 39-50 to be set, um, on the public way in front of 173 West Main Street. This pole will serve as an overhead service pole to 173 West Main Street, um, and you can see in the picture there, that weird fancy circle thing, that's the tree that I was drawing there, so as you can see, the service goes directly through that, so that will be removed once the new pole and the new services run from that pole, if, if we get permission. That pole 39-50 will be, um, split in the middle between pole 40 and 39 across the road, 65 feet difference between each pole to 39-50.
Uh, we have town engineer Fred Litchfield in the audience. Fred, you've reviewed this, you're satisfied that everything's.
I have a memo that you shall have copied of, and I find it adequate for you.
Very good, thank you. Members of the board, any comments or questions? Leslie?
Um, you had mentioned in this application that there was the potential for a power issue, you know, if something happened with the tree during a storm and the tree came down, there'd be a power outage. Have they actually experienced that, or is that just trying to avoid that?
Um, okay, so the service itself has not been, it has splices in the wire, so there's definitely been repairs there, however, the pole, I don't believe that they've suffered any outages due to that. That being said, the reason why we do that is trees fall down, trees limb breaks, and then what happens during the storms is we get the largest numbers out, and the smallest numbers stay out of power for quite some time, and it's not feasible to keep this service through the tree if there's a potential for it to get knocked down during a storm.
Mm-hmm.
It happens too frequently, and I hate services going through trees. As soon as I get 'em, I remove them.
Mm-hmm, great, okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? None. It's a public hearing, anybody in the audience who would like to offer a comment on this matter? Hearing none, uh, I'll close this, uh, public hearing. Uh, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the placement of a new solely-owned pole at 173 West Main Street per petition number 23958883 as submitted by National Grid.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Great, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
We continue to be slightly ahead of schedule here. So, yes, why don't we move to reports? And Bill, will you lead us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I just have a short, um, short report. I just wanna congratulate Jason and Don, uh, running a great campaign and re-elected for another three years, so congratulations to both.
Thank you.
That's my report. Told you it was short.
You weren't kidding.
I did.
Um, mentioning the election, I'd like to thank everybody that voted one way or the other. Um, the turnout wasn't great, but it was better than last year, so hopefully every year, maybe it'll get a little better, so, and I'd like to thank Andy and all his campaign, um, people that worked, and the police, and the DPW, and everybody that worked hard for the election. Um, a while ago, John, I handed you, um, the restrictions, the deed restriction on the Ball Hill property that has composting going on. Has town council reviewed that to see if we could do anything further or more than what we're doing? One of the things that's in there is like vehicles that aren't supposed to just rust there, and there are vehicles that haven't moved on that property, so can we at least get those removed? Can we start trying to do something?
Um, let me circle back on that. As you well know, the, um, Senator Chandler's office, we've been working very closely with, and she has filed, uh, legislation, uh, to help, uh, us better regulate, uh, composting operations in town. Uh, that legislation is pending, um, and, uh, we're hopeful to get that hearing, uh, coming forward in the next month or so. Uh, she's trying to get it fast-tracked, so we can at least get, uh, get the testimony in, and, uh, one of the things we're looking at, too, is, uh, the location of the hearing, trying to find someplace that's more accommodating than having folks drive into Boston, so that's what we've been primarily focusing our efforts on, so, but I could certainly circle back on that.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Leslie?
Okay, I would also like to congratulate Don and Jason on your election.
Thank you.
Thank you for running, and, uh, that's great, nice job, glad to have you back at the table. And also, Bill, congratulations on doing a great job as chair.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You did a very nice job.
Thank you.
I also wanted to remind folks to, um, to not forget about the Northborough Food Pantry over the summer. Uh, nfpantry.org is a site that you can check to see about what items are most needed. I did happen to look at that this evening, and it does seem unfortunately a little out of date. I think the top 10 items are probably usually the most desired, probably in any case, but, um, that's, it's a nice website, if you wanna take a look at that. Um, it's located at 37 Pier Street for drop-offs, there's, there are baskets inside the lobby. I also wanted to mention to be sure to keep an eye out for crosswalks, um, with the weather being nicer, we have a lot more runners and walkers and strollers and that sort of thing, and, uh, some of the crosswalks are worse than others in terms of the location, so I just wanna remind residents to be very, very careful. Uh, I also wanted to thank everyone who attended town meeting. Um, I think we very, pretty quickly reached a quorum, it appeared, um, and, uh, I do wanna thank people for, for getting up and speaking, and, uh, I think it's a great opportunity to, um, listen to all the presentations and comment, and I think it's great to have disagreements sometimes, too. I think it gets some great discussion going, so I think that's very much appreciated. And I also wanted to thank, um, Police and Fire for your monthly reports, always great information in there about, uh, personnel, um, and the detective work. I know with the police department, there's some things that went on that, uh, involved detectives, and, uh, things were very well done there, it appears. So, um, and also all the statistics that are in both of the reports are really interesting to take a look at, so, thank you very much. That ends my report.
Jeff?
Well, not to pile on, but. Congratulations to Don and Jason, and.
Thank you.
Really, to, you know, to everyone that, that runs, I, you know, made a comment to somebody the other day that putting yourself out there for election takes a bit of guts, 'cause you're, you're really, you're asking the public to almost make a judgment on you and do it publicly. So, you know, it's not for the faint of heart, and I think, you know, both of you ran a great campaign, and, you know, those that didn't make it also, you know, ran a great campaign, and just wanted to take this, you know, this moment to urge everyone out there. We've got roughly 40 boards, committees, and commissions in town, so there is an awful lot of opportunity out there for people to get involved. Um, you know, we're, generally, we have vacancies on, you know, some of these boards, um, and, you know, I'd really just like to encourage people to, you know, jump in and, uh, you know, most people have an opinion, but when you get on a board, committee, or commission, it's really, it's a chance for you to, uh, you know, take it from an opinion to something that's actionable, so I would encourage people to do that. Along with the election, again, thank, wanted to thank Andy Dowden and his staff, um, the police department, I know they had, uh, guys at the polls for the entire day, which they do every, every year. Awful lot of work that really goes unnoticed for an election. I don't wanna say goes on behind the scenes, 'cause that doesn't sound good with an election.
No, that doesn't.
Yeah, so we're not gonna say behind the scenes, but it goes unnoticed, um, and just wanted to thank, thank them. Um, and lastly, Bill, I just wanted to thank you for your leadership over the last year.
Thank you, Jeff.
You did a good job, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Very good, thank you. Uh, I guess I would like to start out by, uh, thanking John and his staff for a very smooth town meeting once again this year. Um, we had some late-breaking issues with health insurance coming at the last minute. It took quite a lot of extra hours, extra work to put something together to address that issue and get us on track for town meeting, uh, so I really appreciate all the extra effort, uh, by John and the staff to, uh, to address that and, and get us through town meeting, and also to thank all the people who turned out for town meeting. It's, uh, it's not a very big turnout, but the people who are there are very dedicated people, very concerned people, and we certainly appreciate their attendance, and their staying through late into the night to get it done in a single night, so, uh, much appreciated, uh, and, uh, just happy that we were able to get through it so successfully. Uh, on Saturday, May 6, I was honored to participate in the Miles for Matt 5K. Quite a good turnout, uh, I think that was the final, uh, holding of this event, I believe, in honor of Matt Bruce, who, uh, passed away from ALS, and, uh, the family has been running this, this event as a tribute to him and as a fundraiser for that cause, and, uh, it was just, uh, very good to be out there, to be able to go through the course. I wanna thank, uh, Police Department for their management of the course along the way, and particularly, I wanna thank Officer Chris Bazell, who assisted me to assist a lost motorist who'd taken a wrong turn and become hopelessly lost in the maze of streets in Northgate, so.
I thought he helped you run, completed the course.
I felt very fresh at the end, you know?
Sounds like a broken wheel to me.
So, terrific event, and, uh, just, just very glad to be able to participate in that. Uh, the town election, uh, thanks to Andy Dowden, town clerk, and all of his staff, the election workers, who made that a very smooth operation throughout the day, um, and again, uh, police and DPW who were, uh, managing that as well. Um, we appreciate all your efforts. Um, I wanna thank all the candidates who ran for all offices, uh, whether they were contested or not, uh, it certainly is good to see people who are making the time and making the effort to be involved and do this kind of work, and it helps all of us, it helps the town. The more candidates we have, the more dialogue we have, the better off we all are, so appreciate everyone's effort. Congratulations to those who were elected, and, uh, also congratulations to the candidates who put up a challenge and, uh, made a very good effort, and, and I think had their voices heard, so, uh, well done. I wanna thank Don for her real, or congratulate Don on her reelection.
Thank you.
And finally, uh, I think I just want to, um, comment on the renovation work that's being done on the roadway at the intersection of Church Street and Whitney around the World War I Memorial. Uh, there's a lot of roadwork, curbing, everything being put in place, it looks like it's coming along very well. I think it's really gonna look spectacular for, uh, Memorial Day, so, appreciate the work that's being done there, um, and, uh, looking forward to seeing the finished product, so. Uh, that concludes my report. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Proceeding, uh, it's now well past the hour of 7:20. Scott Sharbruntier, DPW Director, acceptance of easements for properties located at 298 and 300 Crawford Street pursuant to Article 28 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
We have the Crawford Street retaining wall reconstruction project, uh, that's located at numbers 298 and 300 Crawford Street. The retaining wall is located right along the property line. In order to reconstruct the wall in a, um, different configuration, permanent slope easements were required of the two abutters, 298 and 300. We, uh, have an easement plan that was drafted and provided to you guys, it's a 20-foot wide easement extending throughout the limits of, uh, 398, uh, 300 Crawford Street and three-quarters of the limit of 298. The, um, the easements have been drafted and reviewed by the abutters, uh, they've signed them and been notarized, uh, they're agreeing with the project. I did explain to them that the progress, the project now is entering into the actual design phase, so as we move forward, you know, I will involve them in design review so they understand what's gonna be going on in the frontage of their homes. It's, uh, a, a big change to what they're gonna be looking at, but it's gonna be a better change, and a safer one for the community.
Excellent. Any comments from the board? No?
Scott, I think that's great, you know, uh, getting the people that live there to, to buy into it and to get the easement, put up a wall, it's gonna be much, gonna look much, much nicer than it does now.
Yep.
Very, very good, so, appreciate that. You had work.
Leslie?
Yeah, same comment, really. I think ultimately, these residents will benefit, but I still want to thank them for the Lorenzis and the Pellet.
Pellet, yep.
Uh-huh, for granting these easements, so, I think that's great. I look forward to seeing that when that's done.
Me, too.
It'll probably look very nice.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to accept and execute the permanent slope easement located at 298 Crawford Street from David D. Lorenzi and Pamela J. Lorenzi pursuant to Article 28 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
I have another motion.
Oh, there's another motion, oh. I'm sorry, proceed.
Get the family.
We'll see.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to accept and execute the permanent slope easement located at 300 Crawford Street from Nalan Jean Pellet and Dana Pellet pursuant to Article 28 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before Scott leaves the table, I just wanted to comment, this project was in the capital plan for twice the financial cost. And when Scott came on, he reviewed it and came up with this alternative solution with a slope instead of building a much higher wall, made it safer for the motoring public, and was able to work with the residents. And they're very pleased with the plan right now and the landscaping plan and the safety of it. And I just wanted to acknowledge that we have a better project for literally half the cost, and the residents out there are happy. So, this is the way it's supposed to work. I just wanted to acknowledge that from Scott before he left the table.
Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Excellent. Pass the hour of 7:25. David Parenti, Fire Chief, informational presentation on ambulance fees. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, when I first came here, believe it or not, sixteen months ago.
It's been sixteen months.
How many?
Sixty, sixty months. Wow.
I know, because I drove back and forth for ten of them, trust me. I started, I started looking at the ambulance rates, what we're billing, and wanted to do a little bit further of a study. So, I pulled five years of billing history from our, our current billing agent and did some review on that. And then was lucky enough to be asked to participate in a survey from other departments of similar size. And I was look, and I asked for a copy of that final assessment, or that's final survey. And it turns out that Northborough is very low on the list. When I say low on the list, I mean what we're billing. In fact, I believe we were the lowest, the lowest. So, I was kind of curious how that happened. Well, our, our fees haven't been touched since 2009. We have not increased anything on our ambulance fees. There has been increase in cost, obviously, for things such as EpiPens, which have gone from probably ten, fifteen dollars to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And everything has climbed. We've done nothing to change our rates in order to keep up with that. So, the study I did was really, or the, on the paperwork I sent you, was very preliminary. I'm a fire chief, I'm not a, I'm not a fees expert. But what I did is I took those, the fees, and I, and I looked at the survey, and you can read through how I came up to the amounts that I recommended. But again, that is a preliminary survey. What point I'd really like to make tonight is, number one, our fees are low compared to everyone else in the area. Several years ago, Medicare/Medicaid, point number two, is that Medicare/Medicaid wanted everyone to move to what's called bundle billing. So, Northborough is still on an individual billing basis, meaning we bill a base rate for our basic life support, transport, and then bill so much for oxygen, so much for an EKG, so much for if we have to use a defibrillator, so much for an extra EMT. So, those are all separate, like a la carte fees. Medicare/Medicaid and our billing agent, and really, pretty much district-wide, not district-wide, but industry-wide, people are moving towards this bundle billing, which is here's your flat rate for a BLS or an ALS II, which is Advanced Life Support II or Advanced Life Support I. It's a flat rate, you don't charge extra for oxygen, you don't charge extra for this. The only additional cost is for an extra EMT or for a, or mileage. We charge, we, we charge for mileage. I really strongly recommend that we consider moving to a bundle billing form, billing. There's many reasons for it, but it really eases documentation and provides much more accurate billing. So, that's why we go for that. The third and final big point of this whole package is we need to look at our ambulance billing policy. Okay? Right now, the fire chief has the ability to write off any and all ambulance fees that he wants. My opinion is that's not correct. Not that I don't want the power, which I don't, but I really think that if somebody owes the town money, that's not my decision to make. I think it's either a, a board of some sort, or whether it's the Board of Selectmen, but we need to look at our policy and figure out how we're going to do that. Do we write off just everyone? Do we write off only residents? Do we write off people over a certain age or under a certain amount? There's a lot of stuff that needs to be looked at. I do have a draft policy I forwarded to the town administrator that I've used in past departments. I've called around to other departments. I just spoke with the chief of Westborough today, and their policy is if you're sixty-five years or older and a resident, they write you off. Everyone else, they, they balance bill, meaning whatever the insurance covers, whatever they don't cover, we bill you. And the last, so those are the three big things. The last thing I, I wanted to point out before I open for questions is ambulance billing is really difficult, just like any kind of medical billing, to grasp, grasp sometimes, because they have these things called allowable's. Okay? So, we may bill five-hundred thousand, but the insurance allows two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And allowable's are what they consider their ordinary and customary. And the problem is that they're not consistent across the industry. We may have Fallon that pays a hundred percent of whatever we bill, and we may have Blue Cross Blue Shield that will only pay seventy-five percent or a fixed rate. So, it's very difficult to say this, if we increase, this is what we're going to get, because it really depends on who the bill goes to. So, it's very difficult. We, I, I did the best I could, and I still think it needs a lot more massaging, but that's where that sits right now. Any questions from the board? I'd be happy to.
Leslie?
Yeah, um, first of all, this survey was really interesting. I noticed that in, in at least one instance, one or more of these towns was charging almost three times what we do, for starters. My question is, what is a percentage of these towns that does the bundle?
If you look, you can tell, if you see where it says in the base rate, so look, look at Paxton. Can you see Paxton?
Yeah.
Paxton is on page twelve.
Yeah.
If you look further down, you see oxygen, airways, IV therapy, everywhere where it says in the base rate.
Okay.
They bundle bill.
I see, okay. Oh, okay. I see. Okay. My other comment was that I can imagine it would seriously cut down on documentation and accounting if it was, if we go to the bundle.
Well, we, we still need to document very well, because there are medical records and we need, and we need to be accurate on it, but, but it, it, it addresses errors in billing and makes it much easier to say, this is an ALS I call, because it meets, as I laid out in, in, in the parameters, it meets ALS I, it's an ALS I call. This meets ALS II parameters, it's an ALS II call. It just makes it much easier to, and every, every billing agent I've talked to always says, yes, please bundle bill, it makes it easier.
Okay. Thank you. Nice work on this.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, Dave, this is great. I like it, and I think it's about time that we, we do charge more. And I like the bundle billing, because it simplifies. And if we do bundle billing, would you still charge mileage too as well?
Yeah. Mileage is considered, there's, mileage is considered separate, and what I proposed is thirty-two dollars a mile. We're currently charging twenty-three and change. Some, I've seen departments charge up to fifty dollars a mile. Now, that's loaded mile, okay? So, that's not from the time the ambulance leave to the time it comes back. That's from the time it leaves the patient's house to the time it gets to the hospital. So, it's just loaded miles. If it's eight miles, they get charged for eight miles. If it's four miles, they get charged for four miles. So, it's just loaded miles. The only other thing that is billed out separately is extrication. So, we get a motor vehicle accident, and that's billed to the motor vehicle insurance, not to their, not, not, not to their medical insurance.
Also, I liked the, the fact that, was Westborough did, forgives the sixty-five?
Yeah, well, Westborough, and I, I had a long, a long chat with Chief Purcell today, and I asked him, after town administrator and I had a talk, I asked him exactly, how do you guys do your over and above billing? So, a lot of places balance bill everybody. He said, what we do is sixty-five years or older, they do not balance bill regardless of the amount. So, if somebody owes two-thousand dollars, they don't balance bill it. Under sixty-five, and we do this as well, if somebody has a hardship, they can submit a hardship and say, I can't pay for whatever reason. Again, we need to really look closely at our billing policies, so we have strict parameters for that hardship. If somebody makes less than X amount of dollars per year, or whatever you want to use for you, for, for it. So, I, I think it's a great way to do that. And the chief said, they're, what they're currently billing, they have no problem collecting that, some of that, depending on the insurance company, from insurance companies. I think it's high, but that's not us. Thank you.
Dawn?
No, and I'm, I'm in favor of the bundle billing. It sounds like it's going to make life a little easier for everyone. In the future, going forward, I can remember looking at these fees and whatever a while ago, how often would you revisit this?
That's a great question, Dawn, and I think there's a couple ways we can handle that. One way to do it, and the way I've done it in other places, is you, you set the base fee, and then you say Medicare plus two-hundred percent. So, whatever Medicare is, no matter what the Medicare rate is, it's plus two-hundred percent. So, it's a fixed rate, and it's always, you know, when I say it's a fixed rate, it's a fixed difference. So, that rate will change as the Medicare rates change. That way, we don't have to come back every year and get it updated. The other way is to come up with, as, as we've proposed, here's these rates, come back in three to five years and say, okay, our cost has gone up by X percent, we recommend. Or Medicaid has gone up, Medicare's gone up by X percent, we think it's time for us to look at it. We review it every year, so every year I get a document from our billing agent that says, here's what you're currently, here's what Medicaid pays, here's what you're charging, here's what we charge, here's what the fifty highest providers that we bill for charge, what do you want to do? So, we can either leave it like it is, or update it, or whatever we do every year. So, we can review it every year internally. I think coming back to the board every three to five years is more than appropriate.
Thank you.
Jeff? So, I guess a more basic question. Are we doing this to cover costs? I mean, are we currently losing money on, on these calls?
We lose money for all of our Medicaid/Medicare calls.
We do.
Yeah. Our, um...
I, I just...
No, go ahead, Jeff.
I'm listening to the discussion, and what I don't want people to think is we're doing this as a, you know, i.e. a money-making, you know, you know, exercise.
So, I, I ran our numbers today. Sixty-one percent of our basic life support calls are Medicaid/Medicare. Sixty-three percent of our ALS I calls in 2016 were Medicare/Medicaid. And seventy percent of our ALS II calls were Medicare/Medicaid. The way Medicare/Medicaid works is they say, we're going to pay you four-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars, have a nice day, see you later, you can't balance bill. So, that's what we get. It's not an option of getting any more, that, that's what we get. So, ALS II call can cost us upwards of a couple thousand dollars, depending on medications, depending, you know, because some of the medications we carry, some of the narcotics and the meds are fairly expensive. So, it can cost us a lot of money. Or it could be, depending what it is, it could not cost us a lot, it could be a lot less, but it just sort of depends.
I guess I, I just wanted to be clear to the folks that are listening to this, or hear this, you know, down the road, that, you know, we're doing this to cover costs. And, you know, the last thing I want to do is increase something to the point where, you know, we might even be discouraging people from calling, and, you know, because they can't afford it, or they, you know, they have an issue with it.
I, I can't stress enough, and Jeff, I've been, I've had many people say, I'm not calling the ambulance because I can't afford it. Darn it, call us. Let's work that other issue out later. That, that's nothing, your loved one or you, call us. I'll deal, we'll deal with the other stuff.
Right.
Call us.
No, I, I know that, but I'm just, you know...
Oh, you're right. People do that.
Sometimes perception means more than reality to people.
Very much so.
So.
Very much.
Thanks.
Leslie?
Yeah, the bundle billing seems to make a lot of sense. Are there any negatives to it?
There are always negatives, and, and that is, if you, if you're not careful by looking at your numbers, you can end up losing money. Okay? So, it, it, let, you have to really look and say, how many times do we start IVs? And what do we get from that? How many times do we start, do we do this, and what do we get from that? I'm fairly confident in the numbers that I put together, that that's not the case, that we're, that we'll be fine. I have seen people actually do very low bundle billing, and then in some companies, they, as some departments, and they've lost money, but that's not the case here. But that's really the only negative.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Bill?
Dave, so the lion's share of all of our calls, ambulance calls, is Medicare/Medicaid?
Well, like I said, sixty, sixty, sixty percent in 2016.
Is that, is that the same across the state for all the different towns, do you think, or?
Payer mix, payer makeup, payer mixes change from community to community. So, some places, you're going to see a much greater Medicare/Medicaid when you go into some of the cities, okay? Other places, when you go into a more affluent community, you're going to see much less Medicare/Medicaid, much more private insurance. So, it really depends on, on the makeup of the, of the community. Don't forget, we have a couple, we have, we have the Beaumont, we have Whitney Place, we have Coleman House. All those places are Medicaid/Medicare, that's where we're getting from there.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? No?
Dave, I wanted to ask about, I guess, as you've explained, even though we're going to bundle billing, there's still very detailed records kept about services performed and everything. So, we have a lot of detail available there to estimate what our costs are, or know what our costs are, and drive the billing amount from that. So, there's still quite a lot of accountability going on.
Yeah, one, there is. And one of the things that the town administrator and I talked about today was perhaps taking it to the next step and, and doing more of a formal fee, 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 fee study to see what our costs are versus what we're bringing in, and, and are we in line with where we should be? As I said, I'm a fire chief, and I'm using the numbers that I'm using, and I'm using the spreadsheet, but it may not be a bad idea for us to take that to the next step and say, hey, we want to go out and see, and have someone come in and do a formal fee study, and are we really billing what we should be billing?
Right.
I don't think it's a bad idea.
You also mentioned the, the balance billing, basically charging for the amount in excess of the insurance coverage.
Or deductibles.
Or deductibles. Okay, right. Can you comment on what our experience has been in actually collecting those amounts, since they're at the discretion of the?
So, if, if, if I look at, I'm just having my 2016 numbers in front of me. So, if I, if I look at 2016 and I look at my, what's called self-pay insured, which are the ones that were, were, were balance billing, okay? We collected for BLS, ten-point-two percent. For ALS I, we collected five-point-four percent. And for ALS II, we collected zero percent. So, those are tough. Those, those are tough. And again, that's why a, a formal policy is a really good idea, because I was, I've been affiliated with other departments that say, we're not going to do anything. If you don't pay, you don't pay it. Well, you don't tell someone if we're not going to do anything, because then what's going to happen?
No one's going to pay.
No one's going to pay, you know? So, you need, and, and on the other hand, you don't, as, as Jeff said, we're, we're just, we're trying to cover our costs. That's all we're really trying to do, see, how aggressive do you want to be? So, you know, you need to find that middle road. And, and I think that's something that a, that a policy would, would, would get us to.
Okay. Bill?
I think that, because every time that we come across something like this, we do a feasibility study, I think it's a good idea. I mean, we don't have to be in depth, but I mean, you find out what our costs are, and, you know, are we making money, and, you know, how should we adjust it, and how much should we adjust it? You know what I mean?
John, would you like to comment?
Yes, just to get back to, we, we generally have two approaches that we take when we're looking at fees. We, we typically have a cost recovery, recovery portion of our policy. Like with recreation, we want to recover a hundred percent and make it self-sufficient. With the ambulance, I don't think you're, you're ever going to get a hundred percent cost recovery. But back to Jeff's comment about, well, what are we, what are we making and relative to our costs? The fire department's fiscal eighteen budget is two-point-three million dollars, and we're anticipating about seven-hundred thousand dollars in EMS fees, there's some other things in there, but they're primarily EMS fees. So, the fees for charges, or the, the charges for the ambulance services is roughly at max thirty percent of the overall cost of running the department. So, keep in mind now, it's a fire department and EMS, but somewhere around sixty percent of our...
A little bit, a little bit north of here, probably close to sixty-five, sixty, sixty-five percent.
So, if you think of it this way, so sixty, sixty-five percent of that two-point-three million is really ambulance-related expenses. So, from a cost recovery standpoint, we're not even, we're not even close to, you know, we're somewhere around, you know, less than half or even, or even less, depending on how you look at it. So, we're not anywhere near the point where we're charging too much. But we do want to be clear that cost recovery policies are important, because particularly if people have insurance, you don't, you know, if the insurance company, if they're allowable and customary payment for, say, a BLS is, I'm making up numbers, six-hundred, and we're and customary payment for, say, a BLS is, I'm making up numbers, 600, and we're only charging three, then we're subsidizing the insurance companies to the detriment of the taxpayers. So somewhere in there is the sweet spot. The key, and Dawn raises this, every time we discuss ambulance fees in particular, is that, you know, we don't want, you know, the individual on Medicare/Medicaid really can't afford it, because how many times have we seen, and we had this discussion in my office this afternoon, the individuals who can't pay are the ones that will give you $10 a week until they pay off that bill, and then there are other people that just, they just disappear, and, you know, you can't, and you can't ever collect. So it's important to have a cost recovery focus of your policy, and then a write-off policy of how you're going to implement that. And really, that's the meat of what we need to do, so that we feel comfortable with the fees. But just in a broad stroke, Jeff, we're nowhere near covering our costs. And the last thing we want to do, and what we are doing to some degree now, is subsidizing the insurance companies. That's the last place we want to be. We want to make sure we're taking care of the taxpayers, and then make sure that we have appropriate policies in place for folks in Northborough who truly can't pay, you know, these fees, the balance billing beyond whatever the insurance company's going to cover, and have a straightforward, agreed-upon policy of how we're going to handle that. Like with anything, you know, you can, like with any fee structure, you can decide that your cost recovery is 10%, or 5%, or 100%. The important thing for us is that it's explicit, that you know what we're doing, we know what we're doing, and the taxpayers know what we're doing, and there's some rationale behind it. And it's implemented consistently, and that's really what we need to get to on these ambulance fees. And by the way, I drove the chief crazy asking questions.
You asked good questions.
As I do when it comes to these things, because people ask us questions, we want to make sure that we have well-thought-out policies and procedures. But as you start probing, you know, these other departments, you know, if you look at the, you know, dozen or so communities in that survey, they all do it differently, and they, some of them are doing it consciously, some of them are doing it because historically, this is how we've done it, some of them are doing it just as a default, and I think that policymaking boards and committees might not be actually clear on where we are. I like to know, what's our cost recovery policy? Are we meeting that policy? And if we're writing things off, because that's the nature, unfortunately, of this particular business, is you are not going to collect everything, and that's just the reality of it. And just like a hospital doesn't collect everybody that comes through the door, and the balance of people wind up subsidizing it, that's the default system that we have. We just need to make sure that our policies fit into that big picture, and that we're getting enough resources that we're going to be able to keep our services where they are. Keeping in mind, we have added four positions over as many years now in that department, in part to make sure that we have the ability to run two ambulances at the same time. So we have added considerable cost to that operation for public safety reasons. We need to make sure that our fees are matching the level of services that we're now providing.
Leslie, you talk about the report I turn in. If you look at the overlapping calls, see how many of those overlapping calls are EMS calls? And that's a second or a third ambulance call that we're trying to run with what we have. So, it's crazy.
Again, tonight, there's no vote, like we always do when we try to introduce a complicated issue. We want to have, start the dialogue, get some feedback. We know we have more homework to do on this before we come back to you. But the good thing is, what I'm hearing is, the bundled building seems, bundled billing seems like the way to go, and then the board's going to want to see a very clear, well-thought-out policy on what we're writing off and how we're doing it, with particular sensitivity to the seniors in the community.
Jeff? Real quick, with the numbers that you were going at, you know, you said roughly 2.3, and calls 60% is EMS calls. Yeah, if we're collecting 700, it's exactly 50%. So, yeah, quick math.
Yeah, I just, I want to, through this whole study that we're going to be doing and stuff, I want to make sure that people do, if they have to call the ambulance, I want to make sure that they call the ambulance. I don't want to, you know, discourage anybody for saying, I can't pay, I'm not going to, I'm not going to call.
And again, I've instructed all my guys, if they're in the field and someone says, how am I going to pay for this, to tell them, don't worry, call the, and I don't mean to say, the chief will just let it go. I say, I tell them, not worry about it. That's not, let's get you to the hospital, let's take care of that, we can deal with that later.
Yeah.
They've been very good with that.
One of the points to keep in mind is, it's just like when you go to a hospital, you really don't know what any of the tests are having done. You don't know what that service costs. The fact that, the fact that we happen to be the lowest in the fee structure right now, you know, somebody in the community is on the high end, you just don't know. You call it if you need it. Honestly, people, just like if you go to the hospital, you don't know how much that MRI is going to cost. In fact, when you want to know, and you've got the time to find out, it'll take you five days to get someone to give you a straight answer. So I don't think that that's going to be a factor.
Okay. Just the last thing, I forgot to mention, where it says percent collected in the report I gave you, that's percent of the allowable's, not percent of the total charge. Okay, so that's just, if you're looking, and you're looking, well, this is what they charge, and this is what they, that's because it's a percent of the allowable, because John had the same question, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, for a very detailed report. We appreciate it. Do we have a timeline in mind for the development of a policy, or?
Well, you know, we started this process with the goal of looking at updating our fees effective July 1. There's no magic to July 1, but typically, you know, you know we like to review these, and the nice thing is, if you were to modify your fees effective July 1, that gives you a whole year's worth of data. Because as the chief pointed out, we don't, we don't always know what we're going to collect, you know? And this particular service has so many holes in it, and where you aren't going to deny service regardless of ability to pay. Legally, we can't, nor, we can't, nor would we. It makes it harder to predict the impact. So in an ideal world, I'd like to see something July 1, but realistically, after our meetings this week, we might need a little bit more time and a little bit more assistance to have something packaged together. So I'd like to see something come back to the board this summer for implementation, so if that's reasonable.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. We have completed reports. Public comment? Anybody have any public comments they would like to offer at this time? I'm sorry, we have a Boy Scout in the audience, I believe. Would you like to introduce yourself and let us know what you're doing tonight?
I'm Ryan Rabu, and I'm working on my citizenship in the community, merit badge.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you for being here.
Are you enjoying the show?
They tell you about the 10-minute speech you have to do at the end.
Very good. Well, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Good luck with your badge opportunity. Anyone else? That'll do that. And new business, execution of collective bargaining agreements with the Northborough Municipal Employees Association and Sergeants Union for FY 2017 through FY 2019. And I believe we have a, we have another...
A memorandum of agreement with the Patrol Officers Union regarding special police officers. So just in terms of the Northborough Municipal Employees Association, the sergeants' contract, these are really just housekeeping matters. You previously approved, and we reported out publicly, the memorands of agreement that were signed. All these are the actual contracts where we've taken those pieces of the memorandum and incorporated them into the actual contract. But we would like you to approve and execute those contracts this evening, and then if I can, I'll speak to the special municipal employee, special police officer MOA separately.
Okay, very good. Do I have a motion? Jeff?
Mr. Chair, I'm a Madam Chair. I move the board vote to execute the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Northborough Municipal Employees Association, effective July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Very good. Jeff?
Actually, if I can speak. Through the chair. So several, several months back, prior to town meeting, the police chief came in and had a discussion with the board about reinstituting the special police officers, in particular to help out with details in some surge capacity, particularly during events like Apple Fest and things of that nature. Very much concerned, as the chief is, with regard to qualifications of those individuals, particularly giving our accreditation. So we were able to come to an agreement with the patrol officers. Really, it leaves all the discretion in terms of the requirements with the police chief. I think everybody was in agreement that this is something that makes sense for us as an organization, rather than using officers from other communities to do detail work. The chief has, essentially will have his own, you know, Northborough employees that are accountable to him and to the board. So the agreement got, didn't get held up, but there was a process. So a couple of things needed to occur, which happened at town meeting. One was to classify the position officially, and to give it a pay grade, and then to get the Patrol Officers Union to agree to the implementation. And just so that we're unclear, there was never any argument for them or hesitation. I think they saw the value in this. Police chief spoke to it, and it was really a matter of getting the paperwork done, and getting the positions classified. And what's before you tonight is the memorandum of agreement, which has already been executed by the association, and we're asking for the board's approval and execution this evening, if you're in agreement.
Do I have a motion? Jeff?
I move the board vote to execute the memorandum of agreement between the town and the patrol union regarding special police officers.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Very good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just make one other comment. At the board's meeting, prior to town meeting, I just want to make the public disclosure that the board executed memorands of agreement with all bargaining units for plan-designed health insurance, for health insurance, plan-designed changes, that essentially saved the town over $200,000 to balance the budget, and that is the comment that the chairman made at the beginning. So those memorandum of agreements have already been signed. I'm just, for the record, stating them publicly, as we were not on camera at the time those were executed. And so this is pretty common, that this is the way it works. If there's an issue or concern, we develop an MOA, and if, as appropriate, it gets incorporated into the various contracts. But I just, for the public, want to make sure that we're on record as disclosing those. As we're not done in executive session, just like the one this evening, as there's no controversy, and there's no reason that it would cause an issue in terms of the board's bargaining position, everybody's in agreement. We've done it all above board, and in the open. I'm just disclosing those now for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Dawn?
We actually have another agreement. I move the board vote to execute the collective bargaining agreement between the town and Northborough and the Sergeants Union, effective July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Very good. Execution of cemetery deeds, 1019, 1020, and 1021.
Mr. Chair.
Bill?
I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds, 1019, 1020, 1021.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Very good. Any other business to come before the board?
No other business this evening?
No other business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved, seconded. All in favor? Very good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.